We will call our meeting to order. It is Wednesday, September 11th. We will acknowledge those lost and the attack on our soil on September 11th. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. Great, thank you. It's been a great morning already, and I think the meeting agenda looks pretty robust. So with that, I would ask for a motion approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. Is this trustee Wendell? Is there a second?
Second.
And trustee O'Hare, all those in favor say aye. Thank you. We'll get right into the consent agenda, and I will read the items for everybody online as well. The minutes of the August 14th, 2024 district board meeting. Appointment of hearing officers. For C is revised policy 617 Ames UNC cooperative registration agreement. D revised policy 618 Ames CSU cooperative registration agreement. E repeal policy 2-7100. 700 Police Academy designation. F repeal policy 4-504 transitional retirement. G repeal policy 4-605 acting and interim capacity. H new policy 221 space management. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve. Thank you trustee Trustwell. Is there a second?
Second.
And trustee O'Hare, all those in favor say aye. Thank you. I have it. I believe there is no public comment for today. Thanks Zach. So we'll get right into our presentation from our guests and reps to the board. The first one is Kelly Jackson, excellent at Ames, and I think this will be on Zoom as well, but I'll leave that to Kelly.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and audience. As since we are here at the Ames, I was going to say Ames, we're all at Ames. Here at the Flight Training Center, we selected a student who has graduated from the Flight Training Program. Today, we are going to hear from Sophia Volmar. She graduated in 2020, at the same time that Eric Himmler's daughter graduated. So they were buddies going together through the program with an applied science degree in air traffic control. Currently, she is working as an air traffic control specialist in a rural town located in southeast Alaska called Sitka. If you've ever taken a tour on a boat, you stopped in Sitka. Sophia is an outdoor enthusiast, an inspiring pilot and sport fisherman. And I introduce and welcome Sophia via Zoom since she is still in Alaska, enjoying a nice cool day.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you all for joining me today and allowing me to share my story and college experience with you. I hope that you find my speech insightful. The morning of August 13th, 2018 commenced a day that the majority of people look forward to throughout their childhood. The day that I moved away from home to attend college. Home for me was a small town in Nebraska where, for many years, I longed to move on from. Today was that day, and I had the privilege of moving to the beautiful western neighboring state of Colorado. I had already toured the college I would be attending several months prior and researched the air traffic control program about a year in advance. Ames Community College held so much promise for what was yet to come, and I can confidently say after four years post-graduation, I am so proud to be Ames Community College alumni. From day one, their goal is to set me up for lifelong success. I remember being welcomed during orientation by the Director of Aviation, Eric Himmler, who throughout my entire two years at Ames and even after my graduation, was always a source of guidance when I needed it. As was Patty Phillips, my favorite professor of air traffic control, who always had fun stories about her past career and a wealth of knowledge and experience to share with her students. For the duration of my time at Ames, I worked diligently to ensure I was receiving the most benefit from my time there. I was impressed with the equipment used to help train the ATC students, including the in-route, TRACON, and tower simulators. Not to mention how wonderful it was to have access to the Ames gym, which allowed me to work on improving my physical health. Several times, I recall Ames hosting events where free lunches would be served to the students, and that certainly meant a lot to a broke college student like myself. I often took advantage of the ample opportunity for tutoring outside of regular classes for the more challenging courses such as non-radar and aviation weather. If I required assistance with homework, my instructors were always eager to assist. Study groups were often formed among students to help each other out with assignments and to better understand the course material. I was lucky enough to have made a few great friends while I was in college that have lasted long after graduation, and to this day, we maintain a connection and reminisce on our college experience fondly. Shortly before my graduation date in May 2020, I received notice from Rob Abernathy, previous Dean of Public Safety and Transportation, that I was selected as a distinguished scholar of academic excellence by nomination from Patty Phillips. This to me was not only a testament to the dedication I had towards my education, but proof that my instructors noticed and acknowledged my work ethic, which I so deeply appreciated. During this time, however, I was faced with a challenge that nobody foresaw, which was the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, the Federal Aviation Administration ceased hiring air traffic controllers, and any potential for advancing my career was abruptly halted. With the desire to stay within the aviation industry, I searched for jobs that would still provide me with experience in the industry. Eric Himmler recommended that I apply for a job as an aviation dispatcher technician at the Ames Flight Training Center, and Patty Phillips was thoughtful enough to write me a letter of recommendation in order to help me obtain the position. Once more, I was taken back by the support shown to me even though at this point I was no longer a student at Ames. Thanks to the recommendations and advice, I was able to be hired onto the dispatcher position and work at the Ames Flight Training Center until the FAA began hiring once more. If there's one thing that I've learned in my relatively short adult life, it's that nothing ever goes as planned, as cliche as it sounds. I never anticipated that I would be moving to Alaska to work under Alaska Flight Service since my original plan was to work in a tower or in route air traffic setting. I recall applying for the Flight Service position not truly taking it seriously, but by an act of fate, and after months of a long and frankly difficult application process, in 2022, I was officially hired as an air traffic control trainee with the FAA. I remember receiving a call from the FAA and being informed that I was selected to work in Sitka, Alaska, and no picture or description of the town could have ever prepared me for the breathtaking beauty I would soon encounter. Sitka is a pristine coastal island town located in southeast Alaska, which closely resembles a Scandinavian fishing village, nestled between rainforest-covered mountains and the vast Pacific Ocean. I never expected to move to Alaska and let alone fall in love with it. Before being stationed at my current facility, I was required to pass a month-long ATC basics course in conjunction with four months of rigorous training at the Alaska Flight Service Academy. I was already familiar with the majority of the course material given during ATC basics and at the academy. This is thanks to the knowledge and experience I received from Ames, which prepared me for real-life application. Present day, I'm a certified professional controller and instructor working at the Sitka Flight Service Station. My job position entails providing pilots with essential services, which include but are not limited to: emergency services, search and rescue services, providing pilots with clearances, voice communications, flight plan processing, meteorological and aeronautical pilot briefings, and lastly, training my trainees. I am proud to say that not only have I excelled with air traffic, but I have also received recognition for my work. Two months ago, I was presented with an official letter of commendation from my regional air traffic manager, acknowledging my contributions to Sitka Flight Service. I consider myself incredibly fortunate that not only am I passionate about my work, but I am professionally recognized for it as well. I do attribute a lot of my success to the quality education I received from Ames. I'm unable to talk about how much I admire Ames without mentioning how the reasonably priced tuition resulted with me accruing minimal student debt, and this key factor set me up for financial success. My associate's degree and CTI certificate helped me obtain a career which generates an income that provides me with a comfortable life. This in conjunction with minimizing the burden of long-term student loan payments, I believe, is a perfect example of how Ames prepared me for lifelong success. With providing me a quality education at a very reasonable tuition cost, I could sooner focus on setting myself up for financial security and a retirement plan. If I had the option to go back in time and choose a different route of higher education, I can honestly say I wouldn't want to go anywhere else. I'm lucky that my path has led me to where I am now, and though I'm unsure of where the future may take me, I'm confident moving forward with the solid foundation that Ames helped me build. When I was asked to share my success story, my initial thought was, why did they ask a 23-year-old? I'm still writing it. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to share my experiences with you all, and thank you for your time. And to all the staff and faculty at Ames, thank you for being an advocate for your students.
Thank you for sharing your story, Sophia. Great story. That's why we're here, right? I love that piece, and we do have a little gift for you. I guess I'm gonna have to look at Jerry and have that mailed to you. So that, or maybe they'll send me up there to deliver it. I'm not sure which one, but again, congratulations on your success and best wishes for your future as well.
Thank you so much.
Wow, that's right. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to Heather Lelchuk, our Executive Director of the Loveland Campus for our Loveland Campus update.
I'll gladly go to Sitka for you, by the way. We can deliver that. Welcome, many thanks for the opportunity to present on Loveland. With two new board members, I'd go over very general information about the campus, demographics of our students, what we offer, and activities we engage in. See, I probably went too far, or maybe not. So I can't see that very well, so it might be an interactive presentation. Will you tell me what slide I'm on? We have more part-time students than full-time, and as far as race ethnicity that students identify with, the majority are white and then Hispanic, Latina. All right. Well. Sure. It's a glare, but I can pretty much know it and figure it out. There we go. So the next slide is literally snapshots of our students and a snapshot of the ages they are. And the majority of our students are that traditional age of 18 and 19 years old, but then the next age brackets going up really make up that chunk of the majority are 18 to 24 years old on our campus. More female students than male students, and slightly more students not receiving financial aid than receiving financial aid. The degrees and certificate that we offer on our campus, so we have the associative arts and associative science and liberal arts. In that associative arts, we have a degree with designation in business, so that's the AA Business Transfer Degree. We have a basic animation certificate, which is comprised of four courses. And then we do a lot of support courses for other degrees with designations. And sometimes we can flex just seeing what our student population is and the demand there. But we always have the prerequisites and general education requirements for the allied health programs. So that's like nursing, Rad Tech, allied health professional, and we're doing the general ed for aviation because we get a lot of flight training students coming to our campus. To give you an idea of the student services, again, we work with our other departments in academic affairs and student affairs. This is very much a lot of teamwork here, but we have the learning commons, and that has many services under that umbrella. But it's a computer lab, it's a library, students can check out devices there, they can check out laptops, NOOCs, hotspots, webcams, et cetera. Our learning commons technicians act as IT help. They help our students with MyAmes and Workday and troubleshoot some of those IT issues. Right adjacent to the learning commons, we have a testing center, and that's where students can do a makeup test. Or if a student's in an online course, but they need to come in to take the test, they can do it there. But we also have students that attend other institutions, and they can come to our testing center and pay to take a test that needs to be proctored. We have pathway advising, campus activities programmer, and that's the picture there, that's Corey. He just had a great activity on Monday. He was trying to get our students to get to know each other and make friends. And so he had an affirmation journal decorating craft session. So people sat around, they decorated their affirmation journals, learned about them, and got to know each other. And I got to witness some friendships starting. And then we have what I call front desk services. So when you walk in our campus, we have one entrance, by the way, you can't get lost. You walk into the front lobby, and you're right there at the front desk. And that's where we receive all inquiries about the college. And so we wear many hats to be able to help anyone who's coming in, whether it's community members, potential students, current students, and all employees. For employees, besides assisting faculty that are teaching, sometimes we help with HR onboarding for new people being hired. They can process their paperwork with us and send it to HR. Students, they can get their IDs done at the front desk, they can get a parking pass. They receive all the Artie's pantry items through the front desk. They can order their books, have them shipped to the Loveland Campus and receive them there. So we're continuously engaging with our students and faculty to have operations going. The highlight of our student services that I wanted to talk about is Artie's Pantry Cupboard or Cabinet. So this is brand new. This sits in our student lounge, and it's a self-service cabinet. And this is all the work of Artie's Pantry, the hunger-free campus initiatives, and really Patty and her team working with a fundraiser that the Loveland King Supers did. So King Supers and Loveland raised money because they wanted it to go to Loveland Campus. And our students have definitely showed a need for more pantry services, and so this is there in the student lounge for them. It's nice because it takes away some of those barriers or stigma maybe with filling out a form. They still have access to the other items, but this is also there for them. And just to quote one of our students who uses this and Artie's pantry, and she's like, I knew I always loved Ames, but I love you even more now, and thank you, this is helping me so much. So we try to work with our community partners, leveraging each other's strengths, and I just wanted to highlight one of them here. So this partnership is with the Lincoln Gallery Thompson Valley Art League. It's actually two organizations under one umbrella, and they're a nonprofit that work with community artists. So they were offering fine art courses, but not getting much enrollment for them. So they came to us, and now we partner where we market their courses for them, we provide the registration system, and they're providing the gallery space and the subject matter experts and the talent to teach the courses. So it's really a win-win for everyone because we're getting to get offer courses we never could before and access to the talent to teach them. They're getting, their registrations went up by 50% to 100% in their courses, and they're fulfilling their mission by getting more access to artists and artists knowing about them. So everyone's very happy with this new partnership. It's just an example of several that we have. And then we're always trying to be out and about in our community, increasing awareness about Ames and the services that we have to offer them, but also listening to our community and trying to get the pulse of it and what we can do for them for education and training. So just a couple of pictures highlighting some of the events we do. The first one on the left is the Festival of Lights. That one is in November. They close the street off in front of our campus, so we also open our campus and invite people in for engaging in activities. And the other two pictures are from the Pumpkin Festival, which is October 12th coming up. So I invite you to come to that event. It's really fun. It's on the Foundry Plaza, which is just a block and a half from our campus. As you can see, Artie is the star, though. We're secondary at these events. But we often work with other community events to be out there. So we work with our chambers frequently for sponsoring events or hosting events on our campus, the school district, the city, and nonprofits. So that was really just a general overview. Like I said earlier, it's a team effort. It takes every department at the college to make the campus thrive and be operational. And so I thank you for the time to present. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions from the board? Go ahead. Heather, it's really exciting to see that you saw the opportunity to bring the Lincoln Gallery Thompson Valley Art League together in order to help students and the community. So I appreciate that you joined the forces and made it work for everyone.
Thank you. That was a fun one.
Other questions or comments? Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have representatives to the board. We have Julia Weingart first from our Ames Faculty Association, and she'll be presenting on Zoom. So we'll give them a chance to pull Julia. Smile pretty, Julia. Are we good to go?
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, members of the board, Dr. Rothamer, colleagues and friends. I'm so sorry I couldn't be in person with you all today as I truly enjoy giving the BOT AFA presentation. I look forward to it so much. It's just incredibly wonderful to be here again in front of everybody and just feel the synergy of the day and embrace the fall weather. So it's just wonderful to be here as always. So today, we're actually going to be looking at conferences. We'll be looking at training and professional development, and we will also be looking at our community involvement. So when I think about conferences, everybody, I think about, this is like a perfect area for any professional to advance themselves, to be able to learn and grow, and then bring that wealth or those morsels of knowledge back to the college and to our students where we can apply that value that we learn. So attending an educational conference can contribute significantly to an educator's professional development, workshops, seminars, and interactive sessions to provide opportunities to enhance the teaching skills and incorporate new pedagogical techniques, integrate insight to maintain effective classroom management. Fitness mentorship, improving teaching foreign languages, improving surgical technology. These are just a few of the fascinating topics from the conferences from our amazing faculty. In fact, Gloria Monson, part-time World Languages Department instructor, presented two amazing talks. The first one was entitled, "How to Develop an Online Class for Spanish or Portuguese Language Classroom and Using Apps as a Tool to Increase Teaching Foreign Languages." I think, wow, that must have been some very exciting and useful material brought back to those students. Next, Arianne Parker, who's our part-time physical conditioning and personal training associate, spoke about why the fitness industry needs a formalized mentorship program. Furthermore, Katie Overterf and Melissa Lickfelt, professors of surgical technology, attended various seminars on new techniques that are becoming mainstream, as well as new products making their way to the market for healthcare facilities. Finally, Sumiko Gibson, part-time college for kids instructor, presented a talk entitled Advocacy During COVID-19, How to Create an Advocacy Event for Japanese Teachers. So I can imagine from these conferences that both the professors and the students were able to gain some value. Next, let's move on to training and professional development. This is one of my favorite ones from Cody Jones, professor of welding. He wanted to shine the light on the welding department's recent accomplishments, and I'm glad he did because the full and part-time faculty completed, watch out here, folks, 900 hours of development, professional development training in the last year. I thought that was amazing. So you didn't just have a couple people, but you got the whole department and community on board for that one, which was wonderful. And in fact, Morgan Bland, who is a microbiology instructor, learned about genomics literacy, where she learned to apply new technology to the classroom so students would have more applicable skills and more importantly, increase their interest in research positions. Finally, let's talk about community involvement. Go Team Go is all I can say on this one. The automotive team deserves a huge shout-out. Larry Baker, automotive and service technology professor, wanted to recognize the automotive team and many others from various departments for all of their time, effort, and energy in preparing for the 14th Annual Ames Automotive Show. Not only was this automotive show a hit, folks, but it was another record-breaking car show for Windsor. Oh, go automotive department! On a final note, Sumiko Gibson, part-time college for kids instructor, organized monthly Zoom meetings with all Japanese professors who teach Japanese at community colleges. What they do during these meetings are sharing teaching strategies as well as various ways to support their diverse students. And that ends the AFA BOT report for September. Thank you all so much for your time and attention for listening. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? I think we're all smiling. We love the energy, Julia, even through Zoom.
Thank you all so much again. Got me right in the heart. It means the world to me. I really appreciate it because I do love doing this, and I'm glad it shows.
It does. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You all too. Thank you.
Okay, next up is David Mott, Ames Staff Association.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chair Shock, trustees, Dr. Rothamer, cabinet, colleagues and friends. It's my pleasure today to present on behalf of ASA. 535. So I promise I will not start every presentation with throwing out a random three-digit number. But if you remember last month, I started off giving you a number. We knew at the time that those numbers were almost a full year old. And so last week, when I sent out the all-staff email or the all-staff meeting, there's a, on the email list, there's actually a tally of how many emails I sent out, and so it was 535. So I think that's a, not official by any means, I think D is going to get you official numbers in November, but I think it's a pretty good estimate informally. So again, that's the full-time and part-time staff that ASA represents. So I wanted to share that. To start off, I've got a couple of names that I would like to mention. One of them is in your packet. I forgot to mention last time, and that's Laura Flood, who was elected as the president-elect with me back in May. So you'll definitely be seeing and hearing more from Laura as we go on, and she's already jumped in and been a huge help with everything that ASA is doing. So definitely want to mention Laura and thank her for her help already. Second is someone who has been on ASA leadership for a number of years, and it was stepping off, and that's Megan Blazer. And in fact, last year, Megan was the co-president. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Megan as well and thank her for her service on ASA. She and I had a good chat yesterday down at Fall Inn, and she's just doing a ton of more duties that she sort of inherited. And so she felt like she could not continue to serve on ASA leadership team. And so she felt like she could not continue to serve on ASA Leadership Team. So I want to thank Megan. The last name that I want to mention today, and it's bittersweet, is Nan Prince. So Nan retired two weeks ago. And I've got some stats that I wanted to share with you all, so you're aware. Nan worked for the college for twenty-two years. She held the positions of Bookstore Operations Assistant, Staff Assistant, and Staff Associate. She occupied first the Greeley Campus, then she moved to the Loveland Campus, and then she came back to the Windsor Campus. If I remember, because I was the one who had the privilege of getting to move her from Loveland to Windsor, so I think that was five years ago, if I remember correctly. So Nan's done a lot for the college over many years, served in many different roles, literally geographically all over the place. So she's had her hands in a lot of pots. Specifically, she's been active with ASA Leadership Team for many years. In fact, is even a, was the ASA President for a term. So I definitely wanted to mention Nan's name, put that before you. And lastly, most importantly, I just wanted to highlight Nan had a great, has a great bright smile and a bubbling personality and everything from, you know, she had a prominent place in the Gateway Building Project that we built and just opened in January. And so Nan's always been good to work with, and so I wanted to recognize Nan, thank her again for her service, and let you all know about her. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more at the president's reception, but wanted to mention her to you all. So thank you, Nan, for all your service and for being someone who's all in with Ames. All right. Next, if you remember last week or last month, I highlighted that ASA can only be summarized in two words, collisions and communications. So under the heading of collisions, we did have our first all-staff meeting just last Friday. And that was hosted in the Perk. Remember, I mentioned that we're trying to do a hybrid this year for the first time. And so it was well-attended, both in-person and virtually. I think with technology, everything went great, you know, for the first time. I was a little nervous, but it went really well, well-attended. I wanted to thank the Perk staff, Nikki and Tanner and Amanda for hosting us, and then also they presented at the meeting in telling us all the benefits that the Perk has for staff, so we're thankful for that. And then the CPD group as well also gave us some information to share. That's Jan and Rachel and Stephanie, so I wanted to thank them as well. Wanted to highlight our next all-staff meeting, which will be October 11th, nine o'clock, and we're down at Fort Lupton Campus, in room 111 of Platt. And I actually just reserved a van, sixteen-passenger van, so I'm going to be driving. Anybody from Greeley who wants to go down to Fort Lupton for that meeting in person, let me know, email me directly, and I'll drive you down there. So we're excited for that. I actually don't have the agenda yet of who's going to be presenting, or at least I haven't officially finalized that yet, but that's upcoming. I wanted to just mention, under the heading of collisions, the Fall Ins, we're already two down. I've got two more upcoming. They've been great events. I've seen, I saw Trustee Hayfley last weekend Greeley, I saw Trustee Wendell yesterday at Fort Lupton, so we appreciate that involvement. Now, having good conversations and communications with staff and students has been really good. Okay, moving on to communications. We do now have a Slack channel for ASA. So those of you who are on Slack, there's a public channel. I'll send it out in the all-staff email, but you can search and find that. It's team-asa-pub or public. So if you just want to get on that, on that channel and get a little bit more information, a little bit less formal, a little bit more frequently maybe, please feel free to look that up or ask me, and I'll direct you there. My last communication item is the website, so I've been saying that we're going to get that updated. And as far as I know, I sent a bunch of information yesterday, so hopefully it's updated like right now as we're speaking. But regardless, we've got another meeting tomorrow, and I promise it'll be updated and ready by Friday. So be sure and look for that. Okay, and lastly, then I want to highlight some ripples. This was a great month for staff recognition. We've got a ripple for the grounds crew, which is close to my vest, so appreciate that. There were some other really warm ripples. Fort Lupton Campus seemed to be heavily represented on the ripples this month. So I wanted to highlight James Johnson, IT Support Specialist. He got a ripple from Amy McFarland. And I would just want to read the last line that Amy wrote on behalf of James. "James went above and beyond and consistently checked to ensure I didn't have any questions or need anything further. He's great." So well done, James. We appreciate that. Keep up the good work, everybody. And that concludes my presentation. Stand for questions.
David, any questions, comments? I think we're good. Thanks so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, Brielle Rummings, Student Government Association.
Hello. Greetings, members of the board, Chair Shock, Dr. Rothamer, cabinet members in my Ames community. I'm honored to be here with you guys today. I have a little bit of an update for you guys. So student government has fully revised our SGA fiscal policy and the process that it takes to make it more equitable to students. We were finally able to put these first few requests through, also initiating our very first in-person club funding request. So we decided that if you are going to request money, we want to see you in person, and we want to know why. Just some casual questions and just some more information just about what they want to do. It was really interesting to see, and the students came all dressed up and were a little nervous. It was awesome. Student Government also supported the new student orientation events. I gave a speech as well as our CAP members and our student government tabled and gave tours to engage our new students. SGA also finalized our assignments for a number of college committees and groups. So you will see a lot of our SGA members on some college committees, either with you guys or just in the surrounding. We do have a few more Fall Ins coming up, like David said. Windsor is on September eighteenth, again, from eleven forty-five to one forty-five. Loveland, September twenty-fifth, eleven to one, and Artie's Bizarre, October first, from eleven to one on the Greeley Campus. Finally, I wanted to just share with you some of the upcoming September events that'll be hosted by our campus activity programmers. Corey already started his, but we have Artie Kart Madness, QPR Training, A Blind Date with a Book, Get Ready to Vote, Check, Snack and Register, Mocktails and Resources, and the Drift Car Showcase. So that is my update for the September BOT meeting. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to present. Do I have any questions?
Questions? Go ahead. You're doing a wonderful job, and I am so excited to hear the new terms for the campus activity programs.
Yes.
You have a very creative way in presenting it, so it's great.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you. There's many activities, so we appreciate all that you are doing from the SGA, so thank you.
Of course. We appreciate it.
Great. Have a great day.
Thank you, guys.
There are no action items for this meeting today, so we will move right into the information items. Jerry, do you want to take over from there?
Yes, thank you, Chair Shock. We'll cover both calendars here briefly. First one we'll take a look at is the upcoming events. I won't go through all of them, but there are a couple that I definitely wanted to highlight. On Friday, Friday morning, we have Convocation Day. And wanted to thank the Board of Trustees in advance for attending that and for serving breakfast, so we appreciate that. As a reminder, if the board can be at the Welcome Center by seven-thirty that morning, that would be excellent. We'll get you all set up and ready for everything to start at eight o'clock. Then on Saturday, this Saturday, as was mentioned before, Ames Aviation Day, right here at the Flight Training Center. I definitely don't want to miss that. And we move ahead to the annual calendar of items for upcoming meetings. We take a look at October. We'll see a few annual reports there, the Academic Master Plan, Program Feasibility Review, and Institutional Research, and Core Measures Reports. I will also take a look at the draft 2025 board meeting dates, which is crazy to think that we're already there. But we'll take a look at those dates as well. One last thing I wanted to note is in front of you at your spaces, you will find two new books. You've probably already looked at. Those are for the Board of Trustees Book Club that was discussed at the board retreat over the summer. So I will resend the proposed draft calendar of when those are going to be talked through. And if I remember right, Dr. Rothamer will be part of that as well. So any questions?
No tests, lady. Very good. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, next up, we have the CEO President's Report, and Dr. Russ Rothmer will walk us through.
Thank you, Chair Shock. The first item we have is Common Learning Outcomes Assessment Report by Dr. David Ayler, our Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, board members, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet guests. Dr. Andrea DeCosmo is the Assistant Vice President of Academic Affairs, and she will present the College Learning Outcomes Assessment Report.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock and board members, Dr. Rothmer, cabinet, and colleagues. It's my pleasure to be here today to present to you our annual Common Learning Outcomes Assessment Report. Our Common Learning Outcomes, we call them CLOs for short. They describe the measurable skills and knowledge and values that we want our Ames Community College students to be able to demonstrate upon completion of their time at Ames, regardless of the career path that they have chosen or their degree or certificate path that they have declared. Our CLOs are institution-wide. They're broad, and they answer the question, what do we want all of our Ames graduates to know? These are our CLOs. They've been in place at Ames for about nine years. They were created internally, and they were vetted and approved up through all levels of the institution, including by cabinet and the Board of Trustees. And these are the areas that we feel are important for our graduates to be able to demonstrate those knowledge, skills, and abilities in. These are assessed in our classes each fall and spring semester. And each of the CLOs has a number next to it with criteria. The criteria are basically the specific things that we look for when we are assessing each of those CLOs. So for example, under written communication, there are six criteria. They include main idea, content and context, organization, language, supporting elements, and conventions. So those are the specific things that our faculty are looking for and evaluating when they are looking at written communication. And I do have the other criteria. If you're interested in hearing those two after the presentation, I'd be happy to share those. So a process begins with department chairs and program directors leading conversations with the faculty in their departments. They discuss which of the CLOs they will assess and in which courses and in which semesters. And they typically plan out a few years in advance. Some of our departments like to assess the same CLO multiple times throughout a few semesters just to see if changes in curriculum or delivery might impact performance on a CLO. Other departments might choose to assess every CLO one at a time so that they get a broader idea of what's happening in their department. But regardless of that path that they choose, when that particular semester starts, the faculty choose the course that they're going to assess in and how they're going to assess. So for example, in an English course, the faculty might choose to assess written communication, and they might decide to select a specific paper that students are writing in the class to assess that written communication CLO for. The goal really is to evaluate a product that the students are already creating as part of the course. We don't want to make it anything too different or special or artificial because that might impact performance. So we try to collect an artifact that the students are already producing. So then the faculty do go ahead and collect that artifact, and they evaluate it using a rubric, which lists all of the criteria from that CLO, and they score each of the criteria on a scale of one to four. One means the student is progressing toward mastery of that criteria, and a four would mean that they have already arrived at that particular criteria. Our goal is for our students, excuse me, the goal is for seventy percent of the criteria assessed to be rated at a three or a four on the rubric. And then our results are shared. They're shared with chairs and deans and program directors, who then lead conversations within their departments and programs to make plans and adjustments based on what we saw. And this is our participation for Fall '23 and Spring '24 semester. I continue to be very proud and impressed with the level of engagement in CLO assessment process at Ames. So I think we had great participation this last year. And these are our results. There's a lot happening on this slide, so I will break it down for you. Our numeric data is at the bottom, and this includes data from 2017 all the way through this past academic year, Fall '23, Spring '24. A graph of the data is up above. The colored lines toward the top are showing the trends in each CLO. The key, the color code key, is down in the lower-left corner, so you can see which color represents which CLO. We have a purple horizontal line right at that seventy percent target, so you can see which ones of our CLOs are above the seventy percent target and which ones might be below the seventy percent target. And then those light green bars, those are the grand total of all five of the CLOs for each academic year. We have noticed a decline this year in several of our CLOs. And just in some initial conversations with faculty and some limited research I've been able to do by looking at some higher ed journals, it's very possible that we are still, while our students are still dealing with some COVID learning gaps and backslide. It's also possible, especially with oral communication, we might, we, higher ed we, might need to start thinking of some new and creative ways to support our students, especially with oral communication. We have more students today who would prefer to text over talk. They would prefer to post on social media rather than engage in a conversation. I'm painting with a very broad brush, but I think that is the reality of where many of our students are right now. We also have more students who are taking remote classes and online classes and just don't have the same opportunities to practice oral communication that they have before. But we are going to be engaging in conversations this year in what we can do to better support our students in these CLOs. And I do want to point out, this is exactly why we do this process. This is exactly why we engage in this, so that we can see where we are and where our students are and what actions we can take to better support our students. So in terms of next steps, there are a couple of concrete next steps I'm really excited to share with you. One of them is our Curricular Assessment Committee. This is a committee that used to meet, stopped meeting during COVID, but this past spring semester, the charter was updated and reapproved, and that committee is going to start meeting again starting this month. The committee membership has strong faculty representation, as it should. Curricular Assessment needs to have strong faculty voice and strong faculty input. And that committee is going to be engaged in reviewing our CLOs because it's been a little while since we've reviewed them. They're going to be looking at providing some structure for our curricular assessment process and also engaging in leading those conversations with faculty about what actions we might want to take as a result of our assessment data. The other update I'm very excited to share with you is that we are going to appoint an assessment chair. This is going to be a faculty appointment similar to our chairs of our academic departments. And the role of this individual is going to be to support assessment plans and implementation, support the Curricular Assessment Committee, and support the work. We're going to finalize the job description in the next few weeks, advertise this semester, and hopefully that faculty member will be able to move into the chair position this spring semester. And then finally, I think a common theme that I've heard so far today in the meeting is it takes a village. I think Chair Shock, you mentioned that when Facilities was up here. I think, Heather, you mentioned it when you were talking about the Loveland Campus. So I'd like to echo that as well. When it comes to CLO assessment, there are a lot of people involved. And so I just want to take a minute to really thank and appreciate them, from faculty, chairs, program directors, deans, Dr. Ayler, institutional research and assessment, our academic affairs functional analysts, many, many, many other people are engaged in this process, and we couldn't do it without them. But this work is very, very important for us to know where we are as an institution and where our students are when it comes to these skills and abilities. So thank you very much, and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Sounds like you answered the questions.
I was just going to say you answered. I was really interested, and we have this.
I was really interested, and we have this data. Now, what do we do with that?
Yes.
So I really appreciate that. So do we then, like, look where we saw those dips? We then make the assessments and then make improvements? And then look at that every year, every other year?
That's, so that's, yeah, you're describing the assessment cycle, and that's exactly what happens. So we assess, and then we look at our data, and then we see where we're at, and then we plan some actions to take as a result of what we saw, and then we reassess to see if, did those actions make a difference? If they did, we keep doing them. If they didn't, we engage in some other actions, and it's a continual cycle of assessment and planning and acting and doing and trying and checking. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work, and this is really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. DeCosmo, thank you. I always, this is one of those areas that I find fascinating when we think about our performance improvement and how always to shoot for excellence and that return feedback. And so, thank you for all the work on it. Thanks to everybody who did the work you have. It truly is a village. But I appreciate the information, and I think as you look at the oral communication in particular, we see it in the workforce. And so I think as the colleges continue to work through, how do we help our communities with that? I can't tell you my appreciation around some focus on that, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Pressy O'Hare?
Dr. DeCosmo, just a quick question. Is there a comparative process between AIMed and other campuses, other colleges, so that we know how we compare to other successful colleges, community colleges?
Not in terms of these Common Learning Outcomes, because the five Common Learning Outcomes are unique to Ames. So there isn't really a way for us to compare. Other institutions do have their own Common Learning Outcomes, and there is so much overlap between some of the common ones. Written Communication is a popular one, Oral Communication. The state does have some rubrics that we can all use and share, but I don't know of any mechanism through which we all share our results. But I can certainly check into that and let you know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. DeCosmo.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Dr. Ailer back up to introduce our faculty sabbatical reports.
Thank you. We have four faculty who were on sabbatical last year, and they will each give a short report summarizing what they did and some of the findings. And the first faculty to present is Heather Brown, who's a professor of Nurse Aid and Med Prep.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, Board members, Dr. Rothmer, Cabinet and guests. Thank you for this opportunity to summarize my sabbatical. Next slide. First, I'd like to thank the Board and Administration for this sabbatical opportunity. A special thanks to Dean Anderson, Shelley Powell, my coworkers, who made this opportunity a reality. Allied Health professors rarely take sabbaticals, partly because I don't think many of us understand what an amazing opportunity this is. Our teams also struggle to cover for us in our absence. I really appreciate everyone's efforts to allow me this experience. In addition to my sabbatical work, I've been able to reflect, regroup, and restore myself post-pandemic. Next slide. My project focused on storytelling to help students succeed in allied health courses. This idea originated from students telling me how much they loved the television drama Grey's Anatomy. For years, I would cringe when I heard this since the few episodes I've seen stray so far from my reality of working as a nurse and paramedic for over 20 years. My goal was to create a more realistic story that also fits the students' current scope of practice. Besides taking writing courses, my sabbatical involved writing, casting, and directing a story for my students that includes healthcare themes, patient rights, scope of practice, communication, critical thinking, and situational awareness. Additionally, I wrote and recorded a song with course content that was made into a music video that you'll hear. The following is a scene from a day in the life of a med prep student. I'd like to thank Dev Multer and Greg Driscoll, whose professionalism and expertise have made my creative inspiration possible. I'd also like to thank the students, faculty, and staff for their work on this project. Thanks to Russell Iverson and Carrie Noble for their remarkable acting in this film. And with that, if you would play a short clip.
I heard that Sam, let's try some art camp.
Does anyone have a first aid kit? I'm training first aid and CPR. Is it okay if I help you?
Didn't have that much to drink today.
That was intense, and I'm exhausted. Where'd the night go? What are the odds we just learn about overdoses and then we have to use it on somebody?
I'm not doing that math for you. Can't you just be happy that we knew what to do and we did it?
What is your problem?
Nothing.
Spill.
I took Sophie to prom last year. She's a really nice girl.
That was hard to see.
Guys, what was that?
Not again. I'll call 911.
911, what's the location of your emergency?
The scene looks safe, but let's all get out on the passenger side, just to be safe. I'll check on the driver and put the car in park and turn off the engine.
I'll check the six points and hazards.
I'll check on the passenger.
Are you okay now? Now? Are you okay?
Hi, Mr. Mason. I'm Molly. You might remember me from your English class last year.
No pulse, no breathing.
I'm training first aid and CPR. Is it okay if I help you? Okay, don't nod your head. Try to keep as still as possible. You just don't want to move in case your neck or back is injured. I'd really like verbal consent. If it's okay if I treat you, please say yes.
Yeah, whatever. Yes.
Okay, so what happened?
I don't know. We were driving home from a friend's house, and the next thing I know, I'm here in the ditch.
Okay. Are you hurt?
My head.
All right. I don't see any other injuries, so I'm gonna get behind you and hold your neck.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Do you have any allergies?
Shellfish?
Okay, so I won't be putting any iodine on your cuts. Do you take any medications?
I take some blood pressure pills.
Okay, I assume for high blood pressure. Do you have any other past medical history?
Five, six.
Had a knee surgery, but that was like way back in high school.
All right. When's the last time you ate or drank?
Why are you asking that? I haven't had that much to drink today.
Okay, have you had anything to eat? Like, do you have any low blood sugar issues?
No, I don't think I have any blood sugar issues.
Okay, and you said you were coming home from a friend's house, and you ended up in this ditch, right?
That's what I told you.
Okay, who was with you?
What? What do you mean?
Who was in the car with you when this happened?
It's in your business.
Okay. It looks like EMS is here now. I'll stay with you until they come up here.
Am I gonna be okay?
They're gonna do everything they can. They're gonna bring you to the hospital, all right?
That's not what I asked you. Am I gonna be okay?
They're gonna take really good care of you. I don't have x-ray vision. I can't see into the future. I just don't know. But they're gonna take great care of you at the hospital, okay?
That's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. And next, I'm gonna ask Amelia Buckle to come up. She's an Associate Professor of World Language.
All right. Thank you. So Chair Shock, Board members, Dr. Rothmer, Cabinet guests, going to present about my OER project that I did for Spanish I. Not quite as amazing and flashy as Heather's kind of hard act to follow there, but I'm still very proud of what I did. If you can go to the next slide, please. So I'm just gonna try to use my... Thank you. Definitely not professional with microphones at all. Okay, so one of the things that I was really proud of and want to point out with this is that everything for technology that I used was things that we already had. I didn't have to go out and get other technology. Everything I have, it's free for the students, it's free for Ames. So it was really, I was really excited to be able to use existing technology because one of the reasons that I wanted to do this project was because with language textbooks, they can be like $300 per student, and a lot of that is the technology element that they offer, which is fantastic. But one of the reasons I haven't been able to do this project before was because I didn't have the tools to replace them. So now with everything that we have available, I was able to do that. So like I said, I recorded videos in Zoom and added them to UJ and then to D2L. Used my voice memos. One of the things that was really helpful is I used Creator Plus for D2L that we have just added on. So I think I might actually do one of the first faculty to really incorporate that into my project, and that was really helpful for using, for replacing a lot of the practice activities that we were doing. So the next slide, please. So when we're talking about money, which, this is another reason why, because as I said, these books are like $300 for these students, and you know, it's already a five-credit class, so they're paying a lot more for just to be in the class in the first place. And so as a person who also took Spanish I and did this sequence and seeing that how grossly this had changed from the time when I was a student to what my students were having to deal with, I was really motivated to do this. And so now that we have this, the average textbook cost for the panorama that we were using was like about $236. And again, it goes up to like 300 depending on if they want. Some students actually need like a physical textbook. Some people can use online text. So that's why it varies a bit. So there were 79 students who took Spanish I, which is the course that I used for the sabbatical to do. So that saved them $18,000 in textbooks. Okay? This course is also being used to create the conversational Spanish course, which is three credits. So this course, being able to do the sabbatical for this, has helped me create a template for several other courses. So Spanish I, there were 43 students. That saved them $4,300. Their textbook is a little bit different, a little bit cheaper because it's a three-credit course. Spanish X, 12, or Spanish II, which I just finished doing a course release for and use Spanish I as a template for. 32, 31 students saving like $7,300. And then this course is going to be used to create the second level of Spanish, the combo Spanish course. We have Spanish III and Spanish IV that are also going to be eventually used. But the textbook and material costs for students and to Ames is zero because I use all the materials that we already had. I created my own textbook that I can, I can just print out some of that. So that does cost my department a little bit, but not anywhere near $300 per student. So across the three courses that we're having, we're looking at like $30,000, and this is just starting. So again, like I said, for Spanish III and IV, we're gonna use the same template for that. If you can go to the slide, please. So, and you will have this to look at more closely if you want to. But this is just some kind of images of what the things I've done with the D2L shell. They have weekly modules, they have vocab lists with pronunciation, and they get to hear me pronounce things, which is really great for my online classes, to get used to my voice, because sometimes that's tricky with languages. So then they have their grammar sections, which will be like their textbook. And then the Creator Plus activities that they can practice, which I'm just really excited about having that tool because that was a game changer for me to be able to do this project. And then different assignments and discussions and things that I was able to do. Next slide, please. All right, so I just want to really thank everybody. I want to thank my Chair, Rebecca Saylor, for guiding me with this. Dean Reichel for helping me along the way in writing up this proposal and just being chosen for this and for all of you. This is a years-long project that I've been wanting to do, and it just hit the right time for me to be able to do it with the tools that I had. And so I'm very, very grateful for this. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Amelia. Next, we have Dr. Leslie Morrison, a professor of English Communication and Literature.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, Board members, Dr. Rothmer, Cabinet, and guests. It's truly a privilege to report out on my sabbatical project and to hear the other excellent projects. So my project was focused on the potential use of portfolios, particularly in our Composition I classes, but potentially outside of those classes as well. And so I have a definition of a portfolio. I'm sure we're all familiar with portfolios. Specifically in a writing classroom context, what I want to focus on is students selecting the materials that they include and that the reflective process is really embedded in the pedagogy of portfolios. And this can really help our learners differentiate the what from the why. And so we really want them to think about what choices are they making, but most importantly, why are they making those choices? And so there's a lot of potential for portfolios to really help our student writers think about the choices they're making as they put their portfolio together, as they revise their work, to really understand what makes good writing good. So here are some of the key questions that guided my sabbatical project. It really allowed me time to delve into the scholarship on portfolio theory. There's a lot of it. It was very popular for a very long time in writing classrooms. I also wanted to unite theory with practice. So not only does this work somewhere, has it worked somewhere, but what do our classrooms look like? And can it be an appropriate intervention for us in our Composition I classrooms? I wanted to think about faculty and student workload. And then I wanted to think about what can I learn from here that might be applicable to other academic disciplines? And could that be helpful for other faculty? So again, my process really focused on, the bulk of my semester was spent really diving into the research, which was very fun for me. One of the more interesting kind of rabbit holes I chase are... Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead and kick off again. We'll let you take off where you were. Thank you for your patience. Thanks, everybody, for following the directions and doing what we're supposed to do for safety.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will wrap this up with a couple more slides. Okay, so process and research, I'll just jump right back in. What I really wanted to do is, again, look at the theory. And one of the more interesting aspects of the research was looking at some innovative practices like ungrading or other assessment approaches that are, that are really more cutting edge, that can be combined with portfolio theory and are in line with that. And then I created and distributed a survey of our Composition 1 and 2 instructors to really get a sense of what's happening in those classrooms and what are some of the challenges and opportunities that we face there, again, to determine, is this something we should consider? Portfolios specifically as an intervention for our classes at Ames. So, as a result, I created a Google site that is pretty detailed, because I had a lot of fun with my research. So, we have, you know, all of the research aspects, we have the survey results that are available along with the survey questions. The real outcome is the four recommendations that I made for how we might do this if the department wanted to move forward. So, how could we incorporate portfolios into our current curriculum with sample assignment sheets and schedules to assist faculty, and then an annotated bibliography? And then I also created, to think of it outside the discipline, a portfolio pedagogy presentation for could we consider portfolios, you know, in a different, in a different discipline? And lastly, along with a lot of the other presenters, I just want to say thank you. It was such a wonderful opportunity to really reflect on my own teaching practice. And it's such a wonderful benefit of employment at Ames. So, thank you for supporting my faculty sabbatical leave and also supporting faculty sabbatical generally. Can I answer any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to welcome Sonia Pacconi, Professor of Art and Design, to present on her sabbatical.
Hi there, everyone. I want to take this moment to thank the board, trustees, Dr. Rothmer, Dr. Bornstein, wherever she is on her sabbatical, and give you a little information about what I did for my sabbatical. I also want to thank my dean, Dean Reichel. He actually encouraged me. I, I had not made it through a first cycle a year before I went on sabbatical, and I was going to change it to more academic and pedagogical. And he actually encouraged me not to. And he took took the time to review my portfolio presentation for sabbatical and gave me some great suggestions. And luckily, the second go round, I was able to get a sabbatical. My project actually started in 2019 when I was contacted by the Toksakon Art Center in Jingdezhen, China, which is the porcelain capital of the world. And they offered me an opportunity to teach a master's class. Right when I was proposing my class and I was going to go to China to teach it, COVID happened. So, we changed gears and I did a digital masterclass, but I kind of had to change the whole process because I was locked in my house, you know, trying to come up with ideas. And in that timeframe, I created one of my pieces for the sabbatical or for that masterclass. And then subsequently after that, I developed an entire show based on that first piece. So, the show that I have up here, this is a digital sketch, I like to call it, is featuring seven works of art. And the main focus or theme of my sabbatical was culture and chromosomes. So, I really liked the idea of nature versus nurture. So, my cultural heritage is my father was born in Nijmaken, Netherlands, and he immigrated to the United States shortly after World War II. And my mother's family was born on a reservation in Oklahoma, and then went on and moved to Arkansas where the two of them met. So, I've got this really, I kind of considered a perfect example of what America is. And so, I really like that concept of how my genes and how my life in the, in the world have affected me. So, that's kind of nature versus nurture. I'll just quickly go over the seven pieces. The first piece is featured on the left is Queen of the Cytocine, and that is based on my great, great grandmother from, she's from the Cato Tribe. The next piece over is my self-portrait, 10 pounds lighter and 10 years younger, because I can Photoshop myself in sculptor material. The next one is the actual piece that I didn't finish. So, in the process of creating my sabbatical, I didn't realize that each sculpture was going to take more like 200, 250 hours. And then I had some stuff to fix as well, like pedestals and mirrors that I was welding. So, it, it took a little longer and my Ruth Bader Ginsburg piece is not finished, but she will be. The next piece is Greta Iceberg. She's representing the concept of global warming. She's my favorite. I love Greta. The next one after that is Mother Maya, and she's based on Maya Angelou, who's one of my favorite female authors. During sabbatical, I decide, or not sabbatical, during COVID, I reread all of my African American female artists' books. So, Toni Morrison, Maya Angelou, Alice Walker, and I decided to make a piece based on Maya Angelou. The next piece that's featured is the Frida piece, and that was based on Frida Kahlo. And so, those are the, the main seven sculptures of the show. One of the things that was really exciting is after I finished this show, I got contacted by Toksakon Art Center again in China, and they invited me to propose a funded residency application. And about two weeks ago, I was awarded a nine-week residency in China at the Toksakon Art Center. And so, I'm going to be going on a ceramic history journey through Japan. I'm actually starting in Japan, and then I'm moving my way down to China. So, I will be gone for the entire summer. I leave May 16th, and I won't be coming back until August 3rd for my trip. So, that's my sabbatical. And one of the things I do want to say is, it's always hard because mine is a visual, right? But I appreciate all the work that everyone else has done on their product. It's so easy just to see something, right? And then you're like, oh, they did all that work. But I know everyone has done work. And I really encourage more faculty to apply for the sabbatical. It's crucial, I think, to refresh your topic and your subject that you teach. So, hopefully, if anyone has an opportunity and they want to talk to me about doing it, this is my second sabbatical here at Ames. So, I would be glad to give any recommendations or even serve on the sabbatical committee, which I've done once before. Any questions?
This is amazing work. I told you, I was excited to look at your book. I would love if you could do a short talk when you return from Japan and China.
I would love to do that. Yes. Yes. I accept. Anyone else? Thank you so much for, for waiting around for my purpose or my information. Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot to do my slides. Answer book. Here, I'm going to zip through them because I told you. Oh, there we go. Here's Greta. Let me just run through these super quick because that's my favorite one. There's Lucy, Lucy in the Sky with Diamonds. She has, she's based on DNA chromosomes.
Oh, there's, I refreshed her lipstick after the show opened. I decided she needed more vibrant lips. There's a silhouette piece that goes with the Maya. That's called Why the Cage Birds, or the Cage Book Sees, and it's about Hook Ben. That's my self-portrait. This is the launchroom carpet. I'm going to change. Another one. There's the Queen of the Cytocine, based on my grandmother. And then I think there's one. And there is Frida's DNA. That's Frida Kahlo, based on a painting by Frida Kahlo. There's the piece that I'm going to be making, the Ruth Bader Ginsburg. It's going to be called And that's my digital sketch that I presented to Jingdezhen. And I'm going to be doing a clay sculpture. The crown is going to be a mix of Max's crown and Wildbook's heart and the statue. And then I'm going to hand her a job.
And those are the sabbatical reports. And I would just like to add my thanks to the board for approving sabbaticals. It is wonderful for faculty to get to explore deeply a research area, to rejuvenate, come back and have lots of new good things to do with students and colleagues. So, we appreciate your support for sabbaticals.
Thank you, Dr. Ailer. And thank you to the faculty for the informative and interesting sabbatical reports. Next up, I'd like to introduce Julie Lukengay, Executive Director of the Fort Lupton Campus, to talk about the Commercial Motor Vehicle Operator Safety Training Grant.
Good afternoon, Chair Shock, Trustees, Cabinet, colleagues, and thank you for, and Dr. Rothmer. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Last week, I had the opportunity to share with Dr. Rothmer some exciting news I just couldn't keep inside. And I so appreciated your enthusiasm and response to invite me to be up here. So, thank you very much. We have some really exciting news when it comes to the CDL program and the impact it's going to have on our students and the community. And I would like to introduce Martin Ribacaba. He is the Director of the CDL Program and really had the vision for this. So, Martin, come on up.
Thank you, Julie. Chair Shock, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, colleagues. Thank you for your time today. I'm excited to announce that we've been recently awarded the Commercial Motor Vehicle Safety Training Grant from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. They oversee the regulations for truck drivers and carriers in our nation. This grant totaling $137,560 will cover the program cost for 38 individuals with priority given to current and former members of the Armed Forces, their families, members of underserved communities facing persistent poverty and inequality, and individuals with refugee status. We're deeply grateful to the Biden-Harris Administration for their continued focus on workforce development, especially in the transportation sector, by investing in the future of truck drivers. One challenge we face as a non-credit program here at Ames is a limited access to federal and state financial aid, such as the Pell Grant for students seeking a CDL. One of our goals is to mirror the broader college's success in having 91% of its students graduate debt-free. Fortunately, the support of the Ames, with the support of the Ames Foundation, we secured additional funding from the Daniels Fund earlier this year, along with a generous contribution from one of our employer donors. With the inclusion of this grant, our program has now secured more than $185,000 this year in funding for our students. None of this would have been possible without the dedication of so many of my colleagues. Callie and her team in the foundation, Malone in the grants office, Amber in the Adult Learners Program, Julie, Nick, Cindy, Kries, Brianne, Jill. I could go on and on and on. But of course, my CDL instructors are in attendance today. Their unwavering commitment truly exemplifies what it means to be all in. Looking ahead, our future is bright. Institutions that receive this grant often reapply and are awarded year after year, with some colleges having it secured for over five consecutive years. We intend to utilize every available resource to ensure that Ames/CDL students benefit from this grant for many years to come. Last year, we successfully helped 191 students obtain their CDL through Ames. And this fiscal year, I am projecting enrollment to rise to around 250 to 260 students, which is a 23% increase. We hold registration sessions each semester through onboarding orientations. And I'm pleased to report that for the past three semesters, we filled every course on opening night. This summer, we introduced two new options, our Weekend Class A program and a collaboration with Amber and her team in the English Language Learners Program for the CDL English Development Course, allowing us to serve even more students. Once again, I cannot overstate my gratitude to everyone who has supported our CDL program and to our students who are helping drive the success of our region. Thank you for allowing me to share this with you, exciting news. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Well, thank you.
One quick, I may have missed it. How many other colleges in Colorado received this grant?
Yeah, we're the first in the state to receive this grant in Colorado. This grant is geared specifically to institutions of higher education, so they get the priority for them. But we're very excited to be and honored to be the first in the state to get.
And congratulations to you, Martin, and your innovation leading this for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, for the CEO President's Report, do we have any supervisors in the room with new team members they would like to introduce? If so, please come up to the podium.
If we go alphabetical, we have to go first. We'd like, I'd like to introduce Ally Bolter. She is the Foundation Business Support Individual who will be staffing our front and taking care of all of our day-to-day operations. We have limped along for almost a year and a half without someone, and we have felt that pain. Three weeks into it, she's into event number three or four. We decided that induction by fire is the best way to learn what the Foundation does. You will see her on Saturday at Aviation Day when you come out. She is all in already. And we can't thank her enough for joining our team. She comes to us from a grant-funded position with School of Mines. And we stole her from that since grant-funded programs often end. Ours is permanent. That one was not. So, here she is today. Welcome, Ally.
Good afternoon. We have a couple new facilities employees. Come on up, Wes. We have Wesley Monroe Scoggins and Sal Valatiera. I think Wes, Wes, right? We like to go by Wes. Wes is our new staff associate in the facilities office. And Sal brings a lot of event background in the logistics part, and he's our logistics coordinator who set up this space this morning as well. So, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Shameless plug, Ames Aviation Day, Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM. Hope to see you all there. There's the shameless plug. Should be a fun day. Just a quick story. I don't want to take too much time, but it's kind of a fun story for all who haven't met Michael Sasso, our new airframe and power plant. Just a quick story. I don't want to take too much time, but it's kind of a fun story for all who haven't met Michael Sasso, our new airframe and power plant chief, who's running our new educational program. We're very excited. We knew we had to get this one right, as we do in all of our programs. But those of you who have seen that facility. We need to make sure we get that one right. And I think we did. So before this all happened, we went, Michael, Michael Saps contacted me and says, hey, if we're building a place, I better know what this facility needs. Let's go tour a facility. So I reached out to three different organizations. Two got back to me and we decided to pick one. And so in February, we went to Cape Cod. Brilliant. So Cape Cod in February, I got to meet, meet Michael Sasso, who ran Cape Cod Community Colleges. And AMP program out there and brought it to incredible heights. So he basically stood that program up. And previously he stood up another program. So this is the third program. He's basically starting from scratch. So we couldn't be more happy to have him. Michael Sasso.
Hello again, board. As I said, we are increasing class sizes like crazy this year. With that, I had to bring on some more instructors. So I'd like to introduce Jason first. Jason Porter joins us. Formerly working at Laramie County. He has a career in law enforcement in prior years. Amazing instructor. My students love him. I couldn't be more grateful for having Jason on board. Cody, this is his second week. He's learning what Ames is all about. He got to join us at Tomato Days in Fort Lupton on Saturday. So voluntold, sorry. But he had fun. Daughter came out, his wife came out. They were in the back of the pickup with my kids waving to all the folks in Fort Lupton handing out candy. He's a former Marine. How many years experience, Cody?
Yeah.
13 years. Jason's got eight. I have 15. Mr. Scott's got like 15. Michael has 20. I mean, we have like over 100 years experience in our department. So we're very happy to pass that along to our CDL students. Thank you.
One more very quick introduction. We'll make him a stand-up there by himself. I'd like to introduce you all to Chad Marley. He is our new Chief Information Officer. He comes to us from Laramie County Community College, LCCC. I'm just north of the border a little bit. Other than being able to come and join Ames and be supported by an amazing IT team. His other benefit of being at Ames is his commute to work now is shorter than it was before, living in Fort Collins. So please welcome our new CIO, Chad Marley. Chair Shock, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Ruthmer. We have reflections, comments, or any accolades for today about Ames. And if you have any comments regarding that or future topics. I'll turn it over to you. Who would like to go first? Press CEO here.
Well, another very well organized meeting and very informative, a good job putting it together. And what a way to start by touring our new flight program. So great job. Good day.
Thank you.
Well, ditto with what you said as far as the AMP new facility. I mean, it was amazing. I didn't expect it to be that big. It's beautiful. I think we have a really good future there. And I would like to say, I think I've said this before in other years, I really do appreciate the fact that Ames gives sabbaticals to teachers because it does give you a moment to reflect working on other things and come back fresh and new. And then you bring the energy back to the other students and to the other faculty and teachers. So I really appreciate Ames doing that. So thank you.
Yeah, it strikes me and Zach that every meeting I begin to understand all in more and more. And that's evident in this meeting today. And everybody that presented and everybody that was here, all in. It's obvious that the leadership team, that staff, the faculty, everybody is all in and we're all here for the students. So really appreciate all the work that's done to make a good board meeting. Really appreciate that. And I've just an extra shout out, the IT team and the facilities that set up for these meetings when we're, you know, Jerry, when we're, you know, not at the main office. I know it takes extra work. And so thank you.
Mike, you owe me 25 minutes on the next one. There you are. I would just echo. I, I think today's meeting was again, a great showcase of what Ames is about. And when we look at AMP and we look at the campus out here of everybody and what you've done. And then you take it broader in how we continue to assure that faculty and the sabbaticals and really about what happens with that. How do we take care of ourselves? You guys do a lot of work taking care of the campus, the students, the community. And it's important for us to make sure that you're taking care of you as well. And so I would echo on the sabbatical. I really enjoyed the presentations today. And it was a great meeting. I would ask if there was any other feedback of what we could do or improve. As kind of a closer. Little more air in here. Maybe two fans next time. You can talk to Chuck. He'll, he'll, he'll splurge a little. Nice. Okay. If there is nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.